February eighteenth Agenda 2025. And Tim, remind me, am I waiting for?
Um, I'll as staff add something to the Agenda for tonight. I don't believe Tim does, but you can ask him on his own if he does. So for the Agenda tonight, I'm just going to add one thing to other business item 11A. It's for the voucher disbursement requests. The actual report is printed out in front of council tonight, and they also received an email earlier today with that report, just detailing what it's about. So that's the one addition I have for tonight.
Excellent. Anything else? No? Okay. Do we make a motion to move on to the consent?
I move we approve tonight's Agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay or no. The ayes have it. Okay. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Present to council rules, one motion, non-damatable, will approve the recommendation noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the Consent Agenda for discussion in separate action. Such items removed from the Consent Agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the Consent Agenda. Does the staff have anything to change with tonight's Consent Agenda? Okay, council? All right.
Hearing none, I move that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda items A through I.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or no. All right, what did we approve? We approved city council meeting minutes from October fifteenth, 2024. We approved city council meeting minutes from November sixth, 2024. We approved city council meeting minutes from November nineteenth, 2024. We approved the MPCA Stormwater Resilience Implementation Grant. We approved entering into an agreement with Time Savers for City Council Meeting Minutes. We approved quarterly financial information for general water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and solid waste. We approved licenses. We approved the acceptance of a quote for the purchase of B.S.N.A. Cloud Version, City Project number two eight two one seven. And we approved credit card chargers and payments. Right, moving on to presentations. Annual Sustainability Update.
Let's make this as seamless as possible. Okay. All right, very good. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kayla Kurtz. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Robinsdale, and I'm here to give you an update on the progress and programs and updates that we've made in the year of 2024. So as a refresher, this position, Sustainability Coordinator, was created just over a year ago in January of last year, so I've been in that role since January of last year, but I've been with the city since about the fall of 2022, when I was doing a mix of sustainability work and communications. So I am just going to walk you through some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in the last year as it relates to sustainability programs and policies and projects throughout the city. So, yeah, I'll focus on programs and then projects and engagement. That's kind of how I've broken down the work for tonight. So, the Robinsdale Energy Action Plan, hopefully you are all familiar with this plan. It's really the main guiding framework that we use to work towards our community energy-related goals. This plan was adopted by the council in August of 2023, after about a year of planning with various stakeholders. So we had a group of residents, we had city staff, commissioners, council member, to all sort of contribute ideas and goals and issues and hopes and dreams as they relate to energy in Robinsdale, and that kind of culminated into what is now the Energy Action Plan. So this plan sets out to achieve or avoid an additional thirty percent of energy-related greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. That's what we're really working towards, and to do that, we broke down the plan into four main focus areas, which is renewable energy, business, and residential energy efficiency, and reducing energy burden. So now that the plan has been adopted for just over a year and a half, I wanted to call out some highlights of the work that has been implemented since that initial adoption in August. So the first few months were really driven by a lot of engagement and just letting folks know that this plan exists and letting folks know that this is a priority for the city and for our residents. So we created a landing page on the city website with all sorts of energy resources, and that's really the main page that we kind of send folks to when they come to us with questions about, you know, how can I lower my utility bill or my energy bill? How can I make my home more efficient? How can I save some money? What are those like quick upgrades we can make? We push folks to that page. We also have information there on there about rebates and tax credits and things like that. We also tried to push this information just out in the public. So we spent some time tabling at events this summer. We created all sorts of flyers and handouts. We posted on social media. Hopefully, you know, it's my goal to have a blurb about something energy or sustainability-related in just about every newsletter that goes out now, so hopefully residents are seeing that and noticing it and learning from it. We also had a really fantastic Minnesota Green Corps member that we hosted, and he is really what made a lot of this engagement possible because he had, that was his main role, and so he made some really valuable relationships with our school district and our faith-based organizations and businesses and multifamily properties in Robinsdale. And he was kind of that liaison between the city's energy-related work and those organizations and getting them connected again to programs and rebates and things like that. I'll flip through some of the flyers and resources that we created, just because I think they're really awesome. Our Partners in Energy Implementation folks are really great, and they are what make these outreach materials possible. So we have these flyers out at the front desk. If we're out tabling, we'll hand these out. But I just wanted to highlight that Partners in Energy is just a really great resource for creating things like this. So we have a Business Energy Resource flyer, a Low Income Property Energy Resource flyer, tips for how to install renewable energy or solar panels on your home, just a lot of really great materials that we can hand out in the public when we're out and about or tabling at events, or that folks can grab when they're here at City Hall, you know, picking up solid waste stickers, things like that. And so I also just wanted to call out some data from the first year of implementation. We do get, every six months or so, we get a roundup of data from Excel, so I don't have the data from the latter half of 2024, but what you see on the screen is through June of 2024. So almost based off of the engagement and outreach and things like that that we conducted over the last year and a half, we've achieved almost 700,000 kilowatt hours of energy savings across the community, engaged almost 700 residents in different energy efficiency programs, and avoided over 300 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. And finally, Energy Action Plan related, I will also note that each Energy Action Plan or Partners in Energy community does agree to an eighteen-month implementation period with the Partners in Energy team, so they've been helping us implement this plan for the last eighteen months, and we're nearing the end of that. So our hope is to reestablish another implementation agreement with Partners in Energy and sort of circle back with the plan and reassess, you know, what progress have we made over the last eighteen months? How close are we towards, or are we on track to achieving that thirty percent goal? And what else do we need to do to keep us on track? So we're hoping to schedule another set of brief workshops to reengage with the plan and then go from there. But I just wanted to let you know that that's in the works, and we continue to implement the Energy Action Plan and assess how it's going. And so somewhat related was the Home Energy Squad. This is a program that's offered from CenterPoint Energy and XL Energy. You know, a resident can get a Home Energy Squad visit at any time. It's been around for years. However, typically, they cost money, so seventy to a hundred dollars, depending on the age of your home. But an exciting thing that we launched in 2024 was covering the cost of these visits for Robinsdale residents, and that was thanks to a $5,000 grant from the Clean Energy Resource Teams. So in 2024, Home Energy Squad visits were free for Robinsdale residents, and this was really, really, really successful. So in 2023, only twenty-six households completed a visit, and last year in 2024, we saw eighty-eight households, so nearly quadrupled the number of participants? No, tripled? Anyways. So we saw a huge increase in participation, and that means that we had even more and more households focusing on the efficiency of their homes and making improvements to not only increase the efficiency of their homes, but also hopefully see some impacts on their utility bills and save themselves some money. So that was funded by a grant last year, and thanks to support from the EDA, we are able to continue to offer these visits for free in Robinsdale in 2025, so we'll continue to promote them and hopefully see even more households receive a visit in 2025. The, so the Green Step Cities Program is another sort of pillar that guides our sustainability work in the city. This program is a voluntary challenge assistance and recognition program. It's administered by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and it's designed to help cities achieve their sustainability goals. So if you're a Green Step City, you kind of pick and choose from a menu of best practice actions, and it's up to the city to really set out to then achieve those actions. But Robinsdale joined the program in August of 2019 by resolution from the council, and following that, sort of worked our way up towards through step one, two, and three. And then last year in June of 2024, we were awarded step four. And step four really takes a focus on measuring and reporting metrics rather than like sort of achieving different actions. So some of those metrics that we were recognized for in our reporting was a high diesel fleet average miles per gallon, and then a really great number of housing within one mile of bike route, within one mile of access to fruits and vegetables, and three-quarters miles of a transit route. So these step awards are designated every June, so you can look forward to another update from me about Green Step in June of this year. So the Water Efficiency Rebate Program is another sustainability-related program that we offer to residents. This was previously administered in our engineering department, but I kind of took it over in my role, and I think that that has been a smart maneuver. We were really able to, well, we were able to relieve, you know, that duty from engineering, but then also, I think, in that, we were able to dedicate more time towards advertising the program and letting folks know that it's an opportunity for them. So in 2024, we gave out ninety-one total rebates, which equaled over $8,000 in utility bill credits. And in 2023, for example, thirty-six rebates were applied for. So, yeah, we really increased that number in 2024, which is great, and this, again, is a program that's funded by a grant from the Metropolitan Council. We've been applying for it and administering this program now for a few years. So it's just another simple way to save folks some money and also conserve water in your homes. And, okay, the final program, I just wanted to touch on organics recycling since it's a big thing, especially in 2024, when at the start of the year, residents all saw a charge for organics recycling on their utility bills. So alongside that, we really tried to push signing up and getting folks to participate in organics recycling and receive a bin at their home. So we now have just under a thousand households participating in organics recycling, which is awesome, and the community as a whole recycled over 200,000 pounds of organic material, which is about 106 tons, and also an increase from 2023 when we recycled eighty-eight tons of organic material. So continuing to encourage folks to sign up for organics recycling and divert that waste out of the landfill. Since we do have organics recycling here in the staff lunchroom and the bathrooms, I like to keep track of how much we throw in there every week, and so we did divert just over a thousand pounds of organic material here at City Hall last year. Something else that I wanted to highlight is the mailer that we put out. So we worked with Hennepin County to create this mailer that you see on the screen, and hopefully you all got it in your mailboxes and it looks familiar, but Hennepin County has just been a huge resource when it comes to recycling and solid waste information, so we worked with them to put together this mailer with great information on what is organics recycling, how does it work, how can I make it easy for myself, why is it important? And then it also included a little postcard that folks could fill out and send back to us if they wanted a cart at their home. So moving on to some capital projects, the big flashy, exciting one for the year was the solar panels on the water treatment plant. So it was really exciting to watch come together since the solar, I mean, the water treatment plant obviously has been a project years and years and years in the making, and so it was really cool to have a role to play in sort of enhancing that building even more. We worked with Ideal Energies to install this array, and I included, you know, the important specs on the slides, but just wanted to call out the federal tax credit. So if all goes according to plan, we will get a check in the mail this year for $64,000 from the IRS. I've been working with our finance department to figure out the details of all of that and have participated in some really great trainings on how to get these tax credits because it's a rather complicated process for non-taxpaying entities. But that is largely what made this project possible so soon and so quickly. It's also just important to note that this building uses tons of energy, you know, treating our water and distributing out to our residents. So while it's a fairly sizable solar array, it only offsets about eleven percent of the building's energy use, but every little bit counts. So and after the array goes through a few months of production, we'll be able to gain access to a public portal that monitors that. So we'll have access to that here, you know, any day now, and then that public portal will be linked on the city website and distributed to our residents, and folks can go in and see how much energy the array is producing on a daily basis. And more solar, so this technically, I guess, is going to be a 2025 project, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. We are in the works of installing solar on City Hall, thanks to a grant from the Minnesota Department of Commerce, and again, ideally, this thirty percent tax credit from the federal government. We are working with True North Solar on this project, and while there's nothing installed yet, once the winter, you know, sort of thaws, then they should be on track to begin installation right away here in the spring. So the Community Solar Garden is something that doesn't get a ton of attention, but I just wanted to talk about it tonight. It kind of goes on behind the scenes. So it's also something that, but it's a really cool, a really cool program that the city has been participating in since 2018, so the city does buy into a Community Solar Garden subscription. We have a few kilowatts allocated to the Public Safety Building, a few kilowatts allocated to the water treatment plant. This was previously, they were previously allocated to this building here, but we transferred that to accommodate the incoming physical array. It's for how much energy the subscription produces. We get billed every month by the Community Solar Garden host, and then we see tax, or not tax, sorry, we see credits on our XL Energy bills as a part of this. So this is just, it's another way for, you know, the city to take advantage of renewable energy without having physical solar arrays on all of our buildings, especially because we looked into solar array on the Public Safety Building, but they deemed the roof incompatible with solar, so this is a great way for us to still power that building with renewable energy. And the final capital project that I wanted to talk about is the geothermal feasibility study. So we're in the process of wrapping this up right now, but this project was funded by a grant from the Pollution Control Agency. We contracted an engineering firm to determine or discuss the geothermal potential to heat and cool the new Public Works Building, which is to be constructed and to be designed, but slated for the coming years. So if you're not familiar with geothermal, it essentially uses the temperature of the earth's surface and takes that heat to either absorb it and heat the building or take heat from that building and put it back into the earth. So this final report will be, it's being finalized, the details are kind of being tied up right now with the engineering firm, but once we get that report, myself and our engineering staff intend to sit down with the council and share those results more formally and have a discussion about where and how they'd like to apply the results to the future Public Works Building, because it will be a cost investment. But bottom line for now is that it's feasible to heat and cool the future Public Works Building with geothermal. Okay, lastly, I just want to talk about some engagement that we did throughout the year, which is the fun stuff. So the city, obviously, you know, our recreation departments, the Chamber of Commerce, the farmer's market, we have all of these events that are already happening in the city that are really fantastic, so I was kind of able to just take advantage of those and be a part of what's already going on, which is great. Most weeks, we were out tabling at the farmer's market this summer. We participated in the Chamber of Commerce meet and greet, the Birdtown Boobash, the Robinsdale Sustainability Committee was out tabling at the tree lighting this winter. So any opportunity we got, we would be out there with different materials and resources about energy savings and organics recycling, other waste and recycling tips, you know, information on how to get solid waste stickers, or where do I, how do I recycle batteries, things like that. One of the events that I wanted to highlight was the Business Blitz, which we hosted in July with Mayor Blonigan, our former Green Corps member Noah, as well as some staff from the Center for Energy and Environment. We went door-to-door in our business districts in the downtown and our strip malls and talked directly with business owners about ways that they can lower their energy bills and make their spaces more efficient. And so we connected them directly with the different rebates and programs that the utilities offer. So that was really fun and a great way to talk to businesses directly and just let them know too that we're here as a resource and care about the sustainability and efficiency of their businesses. I also wanted to highlight the inaugural paper shredding event, which was sponsored by the city, free to residents. We got a lot of positive feedback about that and had just about a hundred residents come through to recycle or to shred their paper. And, yeah, the feedback was really positive. We got a lot of comments saying, you know, this is great, we're really excited, thank you for hosting this, this is awesome. So we will be hosting another one this spring, so keep an eye out for that in our newsletters and Birdtown Brief and social media, things like that. But overall, just really looking forward to continuing to participate in city events and find different ways to engage with folks, whether it's in person or virtually or in our newsletters and things like that. And finally, I want to touch on the Robinsdale Sustainability Committee, which you've heard me talk about a few times tonight already, but this committee was formulated back in the summer of last year after a presentation given to the city council by a group of University of Minnesota students. So we recruited members via social media, newsletters, you know, all the typical avenues, and held our first meeting in September. So the committee is a group of ten residents, and we have been working together to establish committee priorities and really figure out, you know, where is this committee going to go? What do we want to do? What do we want to focus on? So the committee, they identified those priorities as establishing a formal commission, increasing participation in organics recycling, increasing the abundance of native grasses and prairie plants in Robinsdale, as well as identifying, you know, more creative ways to engage with residents beyond our normal means. So the committee also spent some time with the city manager and our Public Works Director, city engineer, to really get a feel for what's going on in the city and how can the committee, you know, complement the work that's already going on. So all in all, it's a group of really, really, really passionate residents that genuinely care about the quality of life here in Robinsdale for themselves and their neighbors and the physical environment, and they intend to be very present at upcoming events, hopefully meet with the council. They will also be planting a rain garden in the spring, which they're really excited about, and so am I. And they, yes, are also looking to put together some recommendations that they'll share with the council in the future. So looking ahead, you know, I think it was a really great year in 2024 for sustainability work with these different projects and programs, so I just want to thank the council for establishing this as a priority and continuing to establish it as a priority and budgeting the funds for this work to be done. So I just hope to continue to be able to implement new and exciting ways to better the environment and make Robinsdale a livable place to live for many years. So thanks for listening, and could you answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Yes? Counsel member, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Kayla, really well done, not only on this presentation, but I hope, I hope you view this almost as like a really wonderful portfolio of all of your accomplishments over the last year. It's really, really impressive. So thank you not only for putting together the summary for us, but but for all the work that went behind the scenes. A lot of this is very, very exciting.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. I've jotted a couple of them down. You've talked about our Green Corps members for the past couple of years. Can you tell us if there are any plans for a future Green Corps update? Or a, a future Green Corps member in this year or maybe next?
Yeah, it's been a topic of discussion as of late as the application to host a Green Corps member is currently open. As I was putting together this presentation, I really noticed how, how much impact they have with engagement and just that added ability to, to, to talk to people and, and kind of notice things that we might not typically notice as people that are in here day to day. So yeah, there's, they bring a lot of value. And so I think, I mean, to answer your question, yes, there, there's, there are plans in the works. I think it's a matter of figuring out that their work plan and kind of dialing that in. And then also finding them an office space more practically. That's a challenge we run into. But yeah, it's a, it's, it's definitely something we, we've been considering. And if, if there's, if we received that direction from the council, then we'd absolutely pursue it.
Okay, wonderful to hear. Thank you for that update. And personally, I would be more than happy to support another Green Corps member. And speaking of other things that I'm happy to see in this, especially this last bullet, to be opportunistic with funding, that's been huge. I really like how you've highlighted with the stars throughout about those funding opportunities. And I know since the last council goal session a year ago, that was something that was discussed at length. And so it's really great to see how that's been implemented and further supporting, seeking those grants and other opportunities. And one thing that you had mentioned, how you're learning about some of those federal tax credits from our finance team. I would encourage you, if there are ever other like learning or training opportunities outside of our internal teams and staff here, and if they require council support, please don't hesitate to bring that to us. Cause I think learning how to, you know, improve grant applications or take advantage of some of these tax credits are just going to help support this work and it'll pay back itself. So would really love to, to see more of that work. And then the last piece I wanted to give feedback, I've heard from some members of the Sustainability Committee and they spoke very highly of those informational sessions. So thanks to staff for conducting those. And overall, I'm just, I'm so glad to see that the Sustainability Committee has come to be. And I understand that that's a lot of work for you to help implement as well as staff for hosting some of those sessions. So overall, very, very well done. Thank you so much for tonight and all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, council member Greenberg?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thanks Kayla for the presentation. With, I guess in relation to the grants and things like that, with the change in administration, it feels like maybe there's less of a focus on sustainability. And I guess I'm wondering if you are sensing that like, I mean, some of the things mentioned, it's like expected money. Is there any concern that like we will lose access to some of those things with this change? Or do you have a sense of that yet?
Yeah, that's been a really big topic of discussion amongst my colleagues at our, you know, other, other cities and folks at the county and the state. Thankfully, the tax credits should be safe for a couple of years since they're written into law. It's things like the federal grant programs that have, like my, my colleagues at other cities have gotten, you know, memos telling them to cease work related to those grants. So, and, and we, yeah, we haven't. I think to, to answer your question, the, the tax credits for our, our solar arrays are safe.
Okay.
But yes, the, the changes at the federal level have certainly made things a bit more uncertain.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yep. And it sounds like not just for Robbinsdale, but among other cities that are trying to access this as well.
Yeah, the big, bigger cities that have, you know, more capacity to tackle those federal grants that are really time consuming. Yeah, they're, they're seeing the impacts right now. But I think that also points to the really great network of, of city, city work. The, the sustainability staff members at other cities are really tight and we have a very, very strong network and keep in touch all the time. So we kind of bounce ideas off of each other and, and stay up to date on what's going on, you know, out there. But we'll, we'll want to probably focus on the opportunities coming from the state and, and the county or the Met Council. Because we right now have great leadership at the state.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, one piece of feedback, just as you give like the metrics, like we've saved X amount of kilowatts or metric tons of carbon emissions. And to, it's helpful to put those in perspective of like, how many houses would that be in Robbinsdale? If we saved X amount of kilowatts and how, you know, it's like if we saved gallons, you know, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, like how many pools would that fill? Or whatever it is, just, because I think those numbers are really important and it's a lot. But it's sometimes if you're not familiar with how many hundreds of thousands of kilowatts, like you lose track of like what that actually means. And so from a community standpoint, making sure that residents understand like this is a lot, like we're having some major impacts here. Or like it's, it, it's, the electricity would power 100 homes or 1,000 homes or whatever that means. So great presentation and those are all really great facts and numbers and efficiencies that we've gained. But also want to make sure that residents understand like the impact that's being made in like real world. Here's how many homes or here's how many pools or whatever it is. So.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Council member Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Kayla. Yeah, when we were talking about this sustainability coordinator role, this exceeds all my expectations I had of it. So thank you for your leadership on this. You've done a really good job. Thank you for the presentation. To council member Greenberg's point about the kind of the making it like a human scale, I crunched some numbers. So assuming this laptop has a 50 watt hour battery, which is standard, you can deplete this battery from full to zero 13 and a half million times for the amount of energy we, we save. So yeah, it's a huge deal, huge deal. Good, great work. And yeah, so this is exactly what the role was meant for. So I hope some of the council members that weren't part of those initial discussions can see that, that the grants and tax credits, although some of that a little more up in the air, that is, has paid for itself, will pay for itself, not just in monetary value, but in, you know, healthy environment, all those things value. And then, yeah, I just, I, I really appreciated the slide you had of the green step cities. And so 100% of housing is within one mile of a bike route. 100% of Robbinsdale housing is within three quarters of a mile of a transit route. And 100% of housing is within one mile of access to fresh fruits and vegetables. Just put that on the front page of the website because that's why I live here. That's why you should move here if you don't live here. So that's fantastic. And the one question I had was the solar garden program. Is that similar to the program residents can sign up for? Cause I think I did that a while ago with Excel, but I don't know if they call it community. Do you know anything about that from the resident side of things?
Yeah, I think the, the residential program you're talking about is the Renewable Connect Flex, uh, which it's essentially the, the same thing for residential homes. Yeah. So if you want to, if you want to power your home with renewable energy without installing a solar array, you can buy into the Renewable Connect Flex program through Excel. It's just a couple of extra bucks on your utility bill.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Council member Buck?
Thank you. Um, Kayla, this was amazing. I'd say like after a year, I mean, this stopping, I think kudos to your team truly. Um, I think as a Robbinsdale resident and speaking for the rest of the residents as well too, this is tremendous as the amount of work you put in. But also I think just being able to see the numbers and I think outlining, like thank you for, for breaking that down for even deeper for us to understand the magnitude of, of what's happening, what's going on. So thank you for your work and I don't have any questions at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. It wouldn't be possible without the rest of my colleagues. So I have to thank them as well, especially Richard and engineering. I go down to his office and bug him all the time.
Well, I, I would add to, I mean, what is there left to be said? You did a great job. I would love to see percent towards goals, you know? Just, I just, I love seeing the, the needle move. And I'm not saying it didn't move. I wish I had a resume over the past year that you just put up in front of us. So that's really impressive. Also shout out about the payback on the water treatment facility being eight years and City Hall being 1.8 years. That's really a great stat. So I love seeing that stuff too. So thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, can I have one more comment?
Yes.
Um, also I want to say thank you for the collaborative efforts with cities. I think that's amazing that you have partners to work with. I think that's, that's what we're pushing towards as far as community. How do you create spaces for people to collaborate and have that, have that space? I'm glad you have a space you can, you can connect with outside of here as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I really value my, my colleagues at other cities. They're fantastic resources and people. So thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Public hearings, there are none. So we'll move on to old business. Uh, up first is the Parks Master Plan adoption.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, we can be pretty brief on this one. Uh, you'll recall a couple of weeks ago, you got a presentation as to the final results or at what that point was the final draft of the Parks Master Plan. Uh, a brief history going back a little more than a year ago. Uh, Mr. Basick, who I see showed up, maybe he showed up as a, a local or, or in his professional capacity. I'm not sure if he's on the clock. Uh, but a little more than a year ago, uh, he started the process with the Parks Rec and Forestry Commission. Um, this came from a, a couple of years ago, a goal setting session with all of council. There was both the, the desire to get commissions more involved and to, to do an assessment of our park system holistically. Uh, so the, the Parks Commission really took it on. Um, it was a year long process that included a ton of community feedback. Uh, you saw folks out getting feedback in a variety of capacities at public events here at City Hall, some formal settings, some informal settings. Uh, updates were provided to council and the, the PRF throughout the process. Um, and again, a draft was made available at, at the end of last year and then for a discussion here two weeks ago. So taking all the feedback that was compiled, uh, we did put the final Parks Master Plan in your packet here. Uh, the Sustainability Coordinator will be happy to know we didn't print all 106 pages, but it's very comprehensive here in, in your digital format. So what we're asking for, and then certainly discussion is encouraged, is that you ultimately adopt the Parks Master Plan. Um, and I guess before we get to that final point, I'd, I'd share my thanks to council for this. This is another one that without council support, there's certainly a cost to it. Um, not only in working with some of the professionals we had to, but dedication of resources that we already have by way of staff time and otherwise. Um, as a guy who came up in the park system, I'm passionate about parks. Since it's a great way to bring community together, um, one of the fun things we get to do here at the city. So, uh, my kudos to council for supporting this in the past and going forward uh, into the implementation process. But again, happy to respond to questions, comments, concerns, and ultimately making a recommendation that council adopt the Parks Master Plan in its current form.
Council, any questions, comments, concerns?
Hearing none.
Oh, I'll just say thanks for community input on this. Thanks to the Park and Rec Board and staff. And this is an ongoing conversation. It's a long look ahead. And so we're just trying to plan, but things can change and adjust and it's adaptable. And just wanted to add those sentiments.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that when I think about the, the jewels of Robbinsdale, this is definitely going to be one of those shining jewels. So very nice job. Motion to?
I would be happy to move that we adopt the Parks Master Plan in its current form.
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay, and the ayes have it. All right, next on the agenda is consider a closed session to discuss the purchase of real property.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Staff is making a recommendation that under Minnesota State statute 13D dot O5 subdivision 3C3, that the council will enter into a closed session to discuss the purchase of a real property, uh, noting the property to discuss is 3400 Oakdale Avenue North. Uh, I would entertain that motion, excuse me, I would entertain that motion second in a vote.
So I'm, I'm move that we enter into a closed session to discuss the property that the city manager just outlined under the state.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay, and the ayes have it. Now we're moving to a closed session. All right. Uh, here at 8:30 PM on Tuesday, February 18th. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing acquisition and eminent domain proceedings to acquire certain real property.
I will second.
All right, all those in, is there a discussion? Sorry, any discussion? All right, hearing none. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to say no or nay, the ayes have it. All right, uh, that was old business. Now we're on to new business and a resolution allowing the use of electronic signatures.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I can give a brief overview of this item. Um, so like you said, it's a, a resolution allowing use of electronic signatures. So currently the city of Robbinsdale relies heavily on paper based signatures, um, including council documents like resolutions, ordinances, memos. Um, that also includes like contracts, agreements, stuff like that. So the city is using this to hopefully start the process of using electronic signatures, um, which, you know, paper based signatures can be time consuming. They can be restrictive in terms of if like something gets changed at a meeting, having to update that and come back to a council meeting next week for, you know, signature, especially if it's something that needs to happen quickly. So just kind of helping in not only like ease of use in terms of sending signatures for documents, but also just accessibility and quick, quick response to these things. The Minnesota Uniform Electronic Transactions Act provides legal framework for electronic signatures. And one thing to note is also that they recognize their validity and enforcement and several other organizations, including, I know like St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Hennepin County, Northfield, um, all those entities use signatures too. So we wouldn't be the only ones doing it and actually probably late to the party for this type of thing. Like I said, benefits are increased efficiency, enhanced security. Just because you have a timestamp, you know, it's being sent to that email for the signature. And then accessibility too is a big thing. And then also, you know, we print a lot of paper. So moving into the digital age of getting rid of printing so much paper is also useful for this. Let's see, the software that we, or that I intend to use would be DocuSign, um, which is just another platform. There's several out there. Um, but this one was particularly chosen because I know with our Laserfish, which is a records management system, um, there's already been looked at, uh, DocuSign for integration with that system in the future. Um, so it would just be kind of a nice ease, easy way and easy transition into, you know, coupling and marrying those things together to make it easier for not only people implementing Laserfish in the future, but also DocuSign. To start, it would just be one user, which would be me for, you know, sending out mostly council related documents to start. Um, the cost is $120 annually, so nothing crazy to kind of just see. see and familiarize like what our process can be and how we wanna use it. Um, so in the future, that could be, you know, diverted to all sort of departments and all sorts of, you know, purchase orders and contracts. They don't have to just, you know, go back and forth five times between organizations to get all the correct signatures. So really just making it, you know, easy and into 2025. Um, so, um, with that, uh, we would just ask, uh, Council to make a motion to adopt the resolution allowing the use of electronic signatures. Um, and if you have any questions, certainly happy to answer them.
Okay. I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, thank you. And, um, is this gonna be signatures that, uh, council members sign as well? Is that the intention with this or is it just staff?
Uh, it would be mostly for Council to sign.
Oh.
So it would be Mayor signatures, Mayor pro temp signatures during like work session minutes, um, and it could be like EDA related stuff too. Um, I think under a single user, you get like five envelopes, which is like a package of signatures you can send out in one month. So, you know, three meetings that usually require some sort of signature. And then if we wanna do any special items on top of that, we certainly could. Um, so like if there's a contract or something that needs to go out to somebody, we could add that into the mix too. Um, and the like envelopes or packages aren't just like one, you know, one item, you can include as many things as you want. So if there's a few things the city manager wants me to include with other council-related items, that can certainly be sent out too. So, and like I said, the program will hopefully be expanding so that, you know, as more users happen, happen to get the software, then they can send out, you know, more documents than just five too. Um, I think it's 10 a month or a hundred and eight a year. Um, and then if we wanted to go beyond that, we could too. Um, obviously that is a higher cost, but, um, I think well worth it for the ease and accessibility of being able to do this, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution allowing the use of electronic signatures.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Glad to hear that. All those opposed say no or nay? All right, the ayes have it. Uh, on to other business, uh, voucher requests pending approval for dispersment.
Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. Um, just your every two weeks, um, sort of standard procedure of just making sure bills get paid. So, um, just asking the Council to make a motion to approve the dispers, dispersment request for the period ending, uh, February 18th, 2025.
I move that we approve the voucher request for the time period just mentioned.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no or nay? Right, that passes. Uh, next item, scheduling the 2025 Goals and Top Priorities Session.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, this is something that, uh, we've, uh, discussed internally. Uh, we're asking you formally sent, or formally set, excuse me, uh, next Monday, February 24th, 2025 at four PM, the, uh, special work session, or we call it the, uh, 2025 Goals and Top Priorities Session. Um, just as a quick overview, this is something that the Council's done, uh, the last few years, uh, gives staff direction, um, on some short-term things, some long-term things, some, uh, explicit projects, some more philosophical, uh, but it's also a, a good work session to get everybody together, uh, building consensus. So, uh, Council's also on the same page as we go forward. So, um, staff is excited to bring this on again, setting the session, uh, for four PM next Monday, the 24th.
Okay.
I move that we schedule our 2025 Goals and Top Priorities Session for Monday, February 24th at four PM.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? All right, that passes. Moving on, uh, scheduling a special work session to review Water Tower One lighting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Again, in a similar vein, um, going back to, uh, several, uh, council meetings where we've had some neighbors, uh, discuss concerns related to the, uh, lighting at the water tower. And then most recently at the February 11th, the council work session, uh, we decided it might be a good idea to go out and take a look at the lights, uh, as a group. Uh, a thought that staff had, it'll make for maybe a little bit longer night, um, but we're meeting next Monday, the goal setting is scheduled to go four to eight. We might suggest meeting at eight fifteen. That keeps us on track to get out at eight. Um, that's one less night that you have to give up. It'll be dark, the longer we wait into the springtime, the later we'd have to do it. So, uh, that'd be the first recommended date. If that doesn't work for Council, um, to stick around for a little bit longer next week, uh, we'd be happy to look out at further dates.
Council, any thoughts?
I'm okay with the 24th.
That works for me. We're already meeting.
Yeah.
Works for me. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
No, I have a third, maybe. Eleven. So. We'll basically be standing around.
Miles, do you wanna come up to the mic, please?
Twenty-fourth works great.
Thank you. Yeah, it works good for me and I think the, uh, the important factor was that it was gonna be dark enough at the time. So, and I think that, yeah, that works for that, so.
I agree. All right, so, uh, is there a motion then to schedule the session at eight fifteen on Monday, 24th?
I motion to set the date and time for the upcoming work, special work sessions for 4360 West Broadway at eight fifteen, Monday, the 24th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay? Great. See you on the 24th at eight fifteen. All right, uh, moving on, uh, administrative reports.
I can go quick. Um, I just wanna mention one quick little thing about, um, our transition to Republic Services from Waste Management for our refuse, um, hauler. Um, it's been out there, but I just want to, um, inform people that maybe aren't aware or, um, haven't been informed that we have a pretty extensive, um, FAQ on our website about the transition to Republic, um, for your, um, solid waste and waste, um, hauling needs. So, uh, I encourage people to look on the website. It answers a lot of questions about dates of the, their current pickup for their cards and the, um, delivery of new cards, um, a lot about, you know, sizes and how they switch those or when they can, um, about programs that the city currently offers that might not be going forward. So, um, I really just encourage people to look there and then, um, if they have questions beyond that, they can certainly contact myself to, um, have those answered or have those looked into if they haven't already been answered. So, um, just wanna put that out there. There's also been a lot of, um, posts going out on our social media and in our Birdtown Brief. Um, we'll send out a specific, um, postcards to all residents about the transition, um, and important dates that they should really be aware of. It'll also go in the, um, newsletter coming out later in this, um, early spring. Um, so just make sure that they're paying attention in multiple places and, um, wanna have as much information and like just awareness as possible. So, I just wanted to bring that out tonight and that is the only thing from me.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, a few quick updates from myself. I wanna note the city's, uh, currently hiring a couple of positions, both part-time and full-time. Uh, feel free to swing by the city website to learn more. Uh, community garden plot applications are currently open. Uh, do you wanna share that, uh, both on social media and our, in, in our weekly, uh, Birdtown Brief that goes out, uh, via email, uh, to continue the, uh, celebration and recognition of Black History Month? The city's been promoting a variety of events, uh, both in the area, um, immediately here, uh, in town or nearby with some of our, um, the shared jurisdictions and/or organizations that we work with, uh, in different capacities. Uh, wanna note that the water efficiency rebate program that we heard about earlier, uh, is back up and open and the, um, is my computer froze? Well, excuse me, and once again, wanna call out the Home Energy Squad visits are open again, uh, thanks to the funding from the, uh, RE DA. That's all I got.
Excellent. All right. Uh, moving on to Council, General Communications. Uh, Council, anything to say? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, just wanna thank the staff, particularly the, um, Public Works Department and their efforts on clearing the snow that we've been getting. And, um, yeah, just doing a great job with that, I think. Um, so thank you to them, cause it's, yeah, tough to get up early and in the cold and drive around and make sure everybody's property stays intact too. I can't imagine maneuvering those plows. So, good work. Thank you. Um, I wanna thank the residents that came out today and have been showing up to meetings. I have, uh, always, I, I don't know, I don't wanna say harp on it, but it's, uh, the theme of citizen engagement, I think is, is important to, um, to me and, and I just, yeah, I always wish that we had more engagement and so I'm glad when we do have it. And then the couple of things from the consent agenda that I just wanted to mention, the meeting minutes, um, purchase, uh, we kind of are gonna, we budgeted or set aside money to, um, get some help with, um, the city council minutes. And I think that's a great idea. I think, I just wanna, um, yeah, just reiterate how good of a job that Chase is doing, you know, he ran like a thousand elections last year, so it's no surprise that the meeting minutes are, um, are, uh, need some, just a little bit extra assistance, which I think is a good idea. So thank you for taking the time to, to find that service. And then maybe this is with the theme of the Sustainability Coordinator, but then the item for the MPC A Grant, I'm glad we're applying for that. That could be a huge boon, uh, for our Public Works Department. And that's all I got.
Excellent. Um, we're gonna go over here. Commissioner Blackledge, anything to add?
Um, no, I think, uh, I just appreciate the, the amount of work that the city does. And I think, getting back to the residents, thank you for finding a place for consensus and thinking about how we can best serve everybody. I really appreciate the level of commitment and energy that you're putting towards this. So, thank you for that. Um, and continue to thank for the city staff for the work that you're doing. So, thank you.
Commissioner Parisian?
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to say I'm very much looking forward to working with the Council next week at our goal-setting session along with, uh, representatives from staff. Um, in the past years for this session, it's been really, really productive and collaborative, and I'm looking forward to, uh, future collaboration with this new Council.
Excellent. Commissioner Greenberg?
Yeah, I don't have a lot, but I did want to, um, give a shout out to Salon Halo in downtown Robinsdale as they're doing a, um, or they're accepting prom dresses as donations to give to, um, to prom attendees that can't afford to buy a dress. So, um, I've, just through work, known different people who have been involved with this organization, which I think is called, uh, Project Fairy Godmother. So, um, it's really cool that they're doing that. And if you have a prom dress that you would wanna donate, uh, they're accepting those donations, at Salon Halo.
Excellent.
Great community endeavor.
Great, great call out. Uh, I would also like to just mention, uh, snow removal, um, on Friday night, uh, and, and just underline that the city is not looking forward to ticketing and towing anybody. Um, so much so that, uh, a police officer stopped in front of my house and flashed a light in our living room to let me know that one of our guests needed to move their cars. And so I just, I thought that was really cool that our officers actually don't wanna ticket you. So, um, residents, please, please move those cars. And then thank you to all of you who showed up and stayed, uh, looking forward to the event on, uh, on Monday night. So, and, and seeing more. And with that, I've got nothing else. Is there a, a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.